Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, to order at the 6:30. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for a moment of silence. Reverend Smith, how are you?
Good, good to see you.
Good seeing you, sir.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Let us begin by thanking you for all the men and women that are on the front lines protecting us and keeping us, Lord. We thank you also for these men and women that have chosen to govern us, and we ask that you would help give them wisdom and guidance as they would be good stewards for the blessings that you have bestowed upon this town. We ask that your hand would be upon us continually, and we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Vice President Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuk.
Here.
Councilwoman Muzlak. Councilman White.
Here.
Councilwoman Neal.
Here.
Councilman Pettit. President Bella.
Here.
Sixth president, thank you. We have a quorum. Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we have the Employee of the Month, Mr. Joe Fish from the Stormwater Management Department.
Good evening. Tonight, we recognize Employee of the Maryville Stormwater Utility Superintendent Joe Fish. Joe has made a big difference in our team, and we thank him every day for our efforts. Joe has an incredible work ethic and is a senior member of our small staff. He puts the super and superintendent. We wanted to let you know that all the things you do every day make a huge difference in the town of Maryville. We appreciate your dedication and willingness to always go the extra mile. Joe oftentimes attends work on days off to follow up on projects. He's always first in the office each day. 6:30 is his normal time, but he gets served sometimes at four or five. You know, he goes to bed about right now. And, you know, we originally stole Joe from the city of Crown Point, and thankfully we did because he brought his skills and work ethic here to Maryville, which is great for our town. He continues to make a positive difference in our Maryville, and his hard work does not go unnoticed. We are the best at what we do because we have the best employees just like you. And you may be the oldest employee in town, and you have a lot of age and wisdom. So with that comes, with that comes age and wisdom. So for all you do, we want to recognize you as Employee of the Month, December 2023. Joe Fish, you want to come up? And you could say a few words. I didn't get the $100,000 check for you, Joe.
Congratulations, Joe. Great job, Joe. Consent agenda, Council will register voucher approval for December 12th. Approval of Town Council meeting minutes for November 28th. Approval of ARP committee minutes from November 28th. And approval of special Town Council meeting on December 6th.
Second.
Motion second, motion by Councilwoman Muzlak, second by Councilman Minchuk, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a sign of a vote. What was the saying? Motion carries. Additional appropriations? We don't have any. What is the town attorney review? Okay, thank you. Standing committees and special, standing special committees, budget and finance. Council Hardaway, no report. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit, you have anything for Mr. Pettit, Mr. Bella?
Yeah.
Street Department, Councilman Minchuk.
No, sir.
Elections, Public Relations, Town Beautification, Councilwoman Neal.
Yes, to give an update on the holiday tree lighting that was held. It was our second one. It was extremely successful. We had probably over 500 people in attendance. We did have all the participation from all of the elementary schools where they were given the task to decorate their tree at will. And then, of course, Itting School, Itting Elementary School did win the competition. So we're very grateful to the school board for allowing us to have the schools participate in the activity, and they were very excited about doing it and looking forward to doing it again next year. We did have a lot of, a host of volunteers. We had people, I think, were accompanied to donate cookies. We had the hot chocolate that was there for them also. Thank you to our Mr. and Ms. Claus, Steve King, for willing to put that Santa Claus outfit on and get the job done. We appreciate it. Torens for helping us with the center and his crew over there. Barb, Sapana, Keisha, they were all very instrumental in it. Also Linda Rosa. We did have some community volunteers. Brian, I know he was there also. I'm leaving out anybody. I do apologize because it was a lot of people, but I'm very grateful for the support. We're looking forward to doing it again next year and making it bigger and even better. We are in the midst of hosting our house decorating contest. It is live online up under our town website. We already have 60 votes in for the house decorating contest. So make sure and look at that and get your vote in and drive around for, for that. And I think, oh, the last update. We, in January, we will finish up with the town slogan, so we will have more to come with that right after the new year. But that still should be running live on our town website, too, so they have until like the end of this month, end of December. And then in January, we'll be moving forward with that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Environmental Affairs, Councilman White.
Yes, Mr. President. Don't have anything new for COVID, but I have been monitoring. There's something new out here, specifically in the area of like pneumonia. It's a new one. And they said a lot of children are getting sick. I think it came out of China again, according to some of the data that I looked at. So that's my report on that. Thank you. Do you have anything? Excuse me, Mr. President. Do you have anything you want? Excuse me. Yes, I was going to ask, Marj, does she have anything that she wanted to add?
No, just that they are giving flu shots and the COVID-19 shot at various drugstores. So if people are interested, they could contact Walgreens, CVS, anything in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman White?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Personnel policy, employee benefits, no report. Public safety, Ms. Neal.
I don't have any report for that. Do you have anything?
Nothing at this time, other than I know the officers and firefighters and everybody's been working hard on the street, especially with the holidays coming up. So you up to good work. You're going to go from there.
Thank you. Economic development, anybody have anything under economic development? I don't see any.
Mr. President, I missed on the public safety statement.
Go ahead.
Okay. No, I just wanted to thank the Maryville Fire Department for assisting. The Gary Fire Department for when the old school, Emerson School burnt down. It was such a large fire that they had to call Maryville, so I just wanted to reach out to the Fire Department and say thanks.
Thank you. Economic development, again, no report. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Muzlak.
Yes, I have a question for Torens. I've had several calls about a bike trail supposedly going through Innsbruck. Are you familiar with that, Torens? Is there a new bike trail being made out there?
Not to my knowledge. This is the first time I'm hearing about it.
I'd like to respond to that. It's a bike trail. Looked like it's really a first-class bike trail because they have new lights and everything up there, too. I guess when people get, so they won't get nailed going across the.
Across the trails. Well, that's what they're calling the.
Yes, it's a bike trail, yes.
Okay, is it purely new?
Yeah.
Okay, it is a new bike trail that.
Absolutely is. They haven't even took off the covering of the lights yet, so it's there.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So not familiar.
Thank you as well. It just hit me. I know it is.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Abandoned blighted properties, no report. Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Minchuk or Mr. White, you guys have anything?
Nothing at this time.
I did have one thing. Again, I think we had talked about the utility cost for the community center. I still drive past there and see lights all the time. So I don't know if that's, I know the president had asked people to cut them off, but they're on most.
Every time you ride down Broadway.
Yep. So just wanted to bring that back to them.
Yeah, it's there. Special projects, no report. Park and Mission, no report. They have solid ways, Mr. White?
None.
So it was to be out of plan, permission, no report. Stormwater, mission complete.
Really quick, I presented and attended that the Workmate for Base Development Commission and Advisory Board meeting. We sent an application to them for a project of 97 grand, hoping to get $345,000 in cost from them until the application ends up. It's got to go to the full board. I think they can make a decision from there. Also, we're prepared for our annual reports for 2023. I guess most of the JGS map's all updated, so I think I have maybe one map to go. At first, there, I'll print out the ones for the conference room. There are various, I already printed ones for the hallway here. There's one street map over there, so that should be just fine. And we recently planted trees on the new 86th Avenue construction project. We got trees for them to go for free. These were two-inch caliber, all of them are left, you know, old-sized trees that you get at the nursery. And the ones that we didn't plant, we had a total of 112 trees, so we planted about 30 out there. The rest are behind Town Hall, just door over here, so we'll figure out somewhere to put them in town. Maybe do something with the residents within the parkways and go from there. So we'll talk about that and see where we want to install those. They'll be fine there until early spring, so. That's all I have.
Nothing to report, sir.
Parks.
Mr. President.
I want to just think back to what Ms. Neal said about the wonderful tree lighting that happened at the community center. It was amazing. Everybody did a wonderful job there and impacted the community. We also had Boys and Girls Club Christmas celebration that just happened this past Thursday. There was a lot of people there, and those events went very, very successful there. That is all for now.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I have to go back to a few causes.
I just wanted to mention again, that Carter still sit out there on, with the engine outlets, and it's been there for like two months.
62nd. Okay. As we've been issuing citations, we've been working on that. We had the law firm, and we're talking about what we can do as far as these citations go.
What one was that?
Which one?
The one.
Not yet.
Okay, thanks.
Children's play, children's design? Street department, Mr. White?
I have a couple of things. First, Joe Fish, Employee of the Month for Stormwater, I work with Joe White, very deserving of that, so congratulations to Joe. Mr. and Mrs. Claus, the event at Dean and Barbara White was fantastic. I want to thank Linda and Brenda from my office and the rest of the staff at the center. They did a fantastic job. We were honored to be Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and we will definitely do it again. So, street department wise, we are, we're picking up leaves. We're hauling them out to our compost piles right now, and we are getting caught up on some of the things we missed out on, some potter patching and other things like that. So we, we are busy with the plows around the trucks. They're ready to go once the snow comes, so we're ready, and that's all I have.
You all removed the speed bumps?
Correct. Correct. The leaves were moved, yeah, they were moved started last week. We're moving them. They have to come out in the winter. We actually did a test with the truck to see if we could pop over them, and there was no way, so we're going to get them.
Mr. White?
Yeah, I just want to talk with Steve, I just want to know if a compost facility that we have in the practical building, it's going to fall.
Councilman, I have to go out there and look. I don't know right off the top of my head, but I'm sure we do. We've got stuff that's been, from my, 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 my.
Do you have a report for Mr. Griffin?
I do not, just what he's provided in your package, so where's the report? Here's a report for you.
Okay, thank you. General orders, first reading ordered, then orders number 23-31, and orders of Town Sheriff's in County Indiana. Authorizing this year, appropriations, and 2023. No, no, they approve of first reading here on the whole, no, no, since 77. Motion by Councilman Minchuk, second by Councilwoman Bell, that we approve order 23-31 with first reading, committee discussion.
Yes, Mr. President.
What's the amount of the appropriations?
The property is $88,194. That's about the structure. Any other discussion? No call. Oh, President, do you have anything?
Only other questions. Only other questions.
Wait, wait, wait.
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk.
Yes.
Councilwoman Muzlak.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Neal.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes first reading, orders is second reading, orders, orders 23-29, and orders on Town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that, providing that orders number 21-24 of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, intended by adding a section regarding completion date of the project. It was passed, first reading by council on Tuesday, November 20.
Motion, 43-29.
Second.
Both by Councilman Minchuk, second by Councilwoman Muzlak, that we approve orders 23-29 on second reading, committee discussion. And because this is a second reading, orders at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If anyone has any comment on orders 23-29. Any public comment on orders 23-29? Any public comment on orders 23-29? Be non-call.
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk. Councilwoman Muzlak.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Neal.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Motion, 43-29. Thank you. That concludes second reading. Orders is resolution, resolution 23-44, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, County Indiana, and concrete monies of the 2023 budget into the 2024 year. Second. Motion by Councilwoman Muzlak, second by Councilwoman Bell, that we approve of this 23-44. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by a sign of a vote. All is the same. Motion carries. Six to zero. Resolution 23-45, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transfer monies of the 23 budget within general, within general. Motion by Councilwoman Bella, I'll recognize Councilman Minchuk. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a sign of a vote. All is the same. Motion carries. Resolution 23-46, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of monies within the funds of the general. Motion by Councilwoman Bell, second by Councilwoman Muzlak, that we approve of resolution 23-46. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. All is the same. Motion carries. Resolution 23-48, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of monies within, within the funds of the general.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Minchuk, second by Councilwoman Neal, that we approve of resolution 23-48. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a sign of a vote. All is the same. That concludes resolution. The ARP, object for judgeite is $78,802.75. Motion by Councilwoman Bell, that the ARC body, seconded by Councilwoman White. Any discussion? All in favor? All. Vote, vote carries. Thank you very much. I just have a vote to VCA and Mark Gatherer. First officiator is Landmark Designs, the owners of oil variants of Goose, of Google, do a lot of electronic investment center at 2080 West 81st Avenue, C3 Highway Zone. This, this is.
Yes, will the petitioner come forward, please? Petitioner is seeking a various abuse approval from section 21-189A to allow an electronic message center located at 2080 West 81st Avenue. The Duke of Oil would like to enter by 8355 by double face call, called Electronic Message Center on the existing bottom half of the sign. The top existing sign will remain the same. The EMC can be set to dim at night. The petitioner would like to advertise hours of operations, advertise business specials and announcements. Petitioner will advertise town events when requested.
We have one more. Motion by Councilwoman White, second by Councilwoman Muzlak, that we approve of this petition. Any discussion for Landmark Society? All in favor, signify by a sign of a vote. All is the same. Vote carries.
Our second for petitioner for the evening is Anthony Lislet Jr., petitioner and official Lee Griffin in the area. He's seeking a various abuse approval to allow a tattoo studio of retail located at 5599 Broadway in the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. I do have to say that before I read, that we received a letter from the doctor next door at 5587 Broadway, and he was remonstrating against it. However, I did talk with him and his wife and his concerns. I told him that if he had any concerns about parking on this parking lot or those kind of things, that he could contact the town. But I will read the letter into the record because it was not read into the record at the VCAB. Dear Ms. Stein, I am the receipt of a notice of public hearing pursuant to the special exception approval for the tattoo studio with retail to be located at the approximate location lots 23, 24, and 25 in block one of the Goose Point subdivision as per plac there above, recorded in plac number 19 and 34 in the office of the recording. The general location is 5599 Broadway. Please note that I do not feel that this would be conducive to our neighborhood because in itself would affect our practice. If you need any further information or have any further questions, please don't hesitate to call Joseph B. Conyac Jr. So I did talk, tell him that if he had any concerns about the parking, that he could call, call me or of course, call into the town. So the petitioner tonight, Anthony Liset, is seeking a special exception approval from section 21-136 to allow a tattoo studio with retail to be located on Point 358 in the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. The petitioner would like to operate seven rounds tattoo shop and supply store. Petitioner has completed the yearly glove worn packaging training. Petitioner practicing all the safety procedures of the industry. The petitioner is licensed and experienced artist. Petitioner follows the Indiana State Health Department law, state government's tattooing in Indiana. This includes that anyone under the age of 18 must be a parent or a gardener. All peels must be stirled and designed for single use. Artists must wear gloves during the procedure in and all surfaces that come in contact with the client's skin will be sanitized with standard cleaning practices. All clients must provide identification and fill out a consent form. The retail store will provide supplies for personal tattoo artists. This will be the first in Southwest Indiana. The tattoo stu- studio is by appointment only. There are eight parking spaces. The parking spaces have to do to the fact that the tattoo is by appointment only. The hours of operation are 10 a.m. to 7 p.m. Monday through Saturday and close on Sunday. And this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Petitioner here?
Yes.
Good evening. Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I just have a question to say that this studio, retail, what part of it is retail? Or is that the same, the same mark?
It's in the same building, but retail is like basically all the retail, you sell tattoo supplies for the artists and shops out there. And I am a.
There's a real lack of having a reseller of products in and around the regional area, so that's what he's trying to satisfy.
Thank you for that.
What kind of products are those? You're talking about inks and needles?
Ink, tattoo machines, tattoo chairs, tattoo arms, the needles, cartridges, jewelry, it's all for tattoo artists and tattoo shops that exist out here but don't have supplies or have to travel far or have to order online, when you can get it face to face and you can pick one and know like, yeah, this is what I want.
Will anything else be sold that is not tattoo specific?
Like gloves, paper towels and stuff like that.
You mentioned jewelry.
Yeah, like piercing, piercing jewelry, yeah, not outside that.
Motion to.
Motion to.
Motion by Councilwoman White, second by Councilwoman Muzlak, that we approve of this petition and search this stuff.
Just real quick, I know we had another studio come up a few months ago. I had to see studios coming up in town. Only thing I wanted to comment on was, as you can see, the town is very, it's sort of looking for, we care a lot for the children, our capital, but not programs. We used to have community center on the streets, so if you could all participate in our programs, maybe we have a community center.
I would like to. Snuggled paintings for kids and, yeah.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both the same. Motion carries.
Our next petitioner is Michael Pearl, petitioner and Keeshore Patel, uh, Porsche, Tr- Traje Corporation owner located at sixty-one forty-five Cleveland Street. And he is seeking special exception approval, um, to allow a recovery support. So petitioner is requesting special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one-thirty-six in the C-two community commercial zoning district to operate a recovery support service to be known as Liberty House Recovery Cafe. The proposed Recovery Cafe is one of fifteen cafes in the state of Indiana. The cafe supports the development of the mind, body, and spirit, but intended to design recovery by creating a community committed to love, support, equality, and inclusion. The core components of the Recovery Cafe are to provide a menu, provide resources and referrals, meal services, and interaction by playing cards or bingo. The guiding principles of the Liberty House Recovery Cafe are designed to create a safe community in which all are gathered. The Liberty House Recovery Cafe achieves this by promoting the importance of connecting with love in ourselves and others, showing respect, cultivating compassion, and practice forgiveness, encouraging growth, and give back. However, membership is required. Members must attend one recovery circle a week, which is led by a peer coach. Be drug and alcohol free in the cafe space, be willing to give back as a volunteer to help within the cafe space. The Liberty House Recovery Cafe is open Tuesday through Saturday from one P.M. to five P.M. There are four peer coaches on, and one staff along with several volunteers at the Recovery Cafe. And this is for this petitioner only, for this location only, and for this use only.
Mr. President. Uh, Michael Pearl.
Yes.
Um, I just want to know, West Side or Cleveland, West Side or East Side? East Side.
Well, can we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second. Motion by Council. Second by Councilwoman Muzelak.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What is the fee for the membership?
The fee that goes on. We do have to cover the cafe, dispense the amount of the mayor's membership, and probably the location of the other recovery network. And so it's a free service to.
Yes, ma'am.
Your recovery policy, are you licensed, registered?
Yeah, it's started back here, but somebody called to update trend and do a, a, a strength. We all have, uh, vehicles here. And they kind of use their funds succession.
Just for the council's presentation, your service is a moral referral service, correct?
Yes, correct. Um, since the last time I appeared before the planning building, um, uh, we need here, we got a female from down the state, and there's no lady in here and there, but she's in recovery. She had transportation barrier, so she was requesting transportation. So we dispatched the peers coach to pick her up, brought her to our home, registered her in our system, and water her meal services, and she flew back and called to the doctor. And so it's all about removing barriers for people that are in recovery from, to move back to Indiana area.
And how long has it been open in the year?
We've been open since May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. We actually started here, um, in our building, we transferred to eleven avenue. And we thought we were transferring, you know, you were sidelined, circled there, but we wanted to be more accessible and we wanted to serve, um, more people. Uh, one of the things I also want the town to know that if our citizens have a recent misdemeanor, it could be, they could have felony, that's recent misdemeanor. We have a recovery works grant that work, work on, uh, to get jobs. If they need closure interviews about the toll, they had hard times and couldn't pay their rent, and they paid their rent, a hundred and fifty dollars a month. We provide food, providing gas cards. And so these services and stuff that we believe that is current of.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just had to ask the chief if he had any concerns about.
All in favor, signify by the side of my.
Aye.
Both the same. Well.
Our next petitioner is Rich Patel. And he is seeking special exception approval to allow dining and restaurant to be located at eighty-one street, Mississippi street. Petitioner is requesting special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one-thirty-six in C-three highway commercial zoning district on one point one three acres to allow a dining and restaurant to be known as Taco Pro's. The Taco Pro's franchise began in the spring of twenty-nineteen in Brooklyn Park, Illinois. Taco Pro's began in a small space and quickly expanded to doubling the size of the original space. Taco Pro's is now an independent restaurant with various of Chicago location. The menu offers something for everybody from alfojari tacos to unconceived refrigerated. The proposed site was previously the rapid fire pizza and the red nightmare terrania. The four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square foot building houses for Jimmy John's with twenty seats, movie king with two seats, and Taco Pro's will have forty-five seats. There are sixty-five parking spaces. The parking spaces is adequate. Most of the businesses carry out. The hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday, eleven a.m. to nine P.M., Friday and Saturday, eleven a.m. to ten P.M. And there will be approximately five employees. And this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. And park does have cameras out in front of the restaurant area.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Mitchell, second by, well, this, this white, second by Councilwoman White, that we approve for this petition.
I can hear you. Well, this is more discussion, I, I, actually, I'm saying Jimmy John's, I think I did say. To touch your ears, my God. I can't hear you. So I would like to approve. So I've been done, okay. We didn't take a moment.
I have a question. I have a question. Call for it. All in favor, signify by the side of my.
Aye.
Both the same. Motion carries. Well, thank you.
And our next petitioner is Anthony Williams, petitioner and owner located at sixty-six oh one west sixty-first avenue or sixty-two hundred Karen Street. And he is seeking various.
I can't hear him. It needs to be heard.
Petitioner is requesting a various abuse approval from section twenty-one dash one-thirty-six to allow storage facilities located in the C-two community commercial zoning district on five ninety, ninety-five acres. The proposed location is the site of the industrial Justin Hard Building that has been demolished. Proposed storage facility about two twenty-five three ninety-one, four forty-five one ninety-one, one twenty-five, four twenty-one, and one twenty-five, four twenty-one, and one twenty-five three thirty-one, two thirty-five three ninety-one, and one twenty-five four oh one. Their type facility will be fenced in with landscaping. The facility will operate with key entry. The building that will place sixty-first and Harrison will have bricks on the building for the retail design guidelines. The this facility will have lighting and security cameras throughout the development. Petitioner will also hire variable police for additional security. Petitioner will have to go through a variance of development standards to allow multiple buildings on a single property. And this, this petitioner only, at this location only. So, um, at the VCA meeting, there was some concerns about, or questions, not concerns, about the amount of, of storage that's going to be going there. So, um, Mr. Williams presented us with, um, the fact that he was gonna propose, um, at the west sixty-first, uh, avenue, a hundred and fifty ten by tens, fifty ten by fifteens, and, and fifty ten by twenties. And on sixty-first avenue, um, a hundred ten by fifteen, and a hundred ten by twenties, and a hundred ten, ten by thirties. However, the number of units may be decreased due to the fact that there, that the land has not been engineered and there may be store lands and also the land has to have potential. So, uh, right now, Mr. Williams is seeking approval for the facility and he's going to hire an engineer.
Mr. President.
Motion by Councilwoman Mitchell, second by Councilwoman White, that we approve this petitioner. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to say that, um, I'm totally, this is in our word, I'm totally supporting. Uh, Mr. Williams, as we all know, has, um, rock for this community. He has the first class place already on sixty-first avenue. And as we know, as you have made a statement, that the owners of my man have been sitting there for quite some time. And I appreciate you, uh, taking that down. I think that's really good for your development, and I think that's what we're looking for, as far as mine, to the side of my.
Take my attention, Councilwoman White. Is there any other discussion, Mr. President?
Tony, my storage, this seems so far the realm of your background, of the things you've done. Um, what brought the idea of storage to you?
Well, you know, there's a, we, we, this, 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 we have a, which, um, seem the presence. But that, son, you, you build stores, and I'm on the, the store. So we figured we would just, for that. So it's not just, I mean, any kind of storage, like, because, by me owning this across the street, you know, it's going to be more nice. So I think that work out, it'll be, across the street. And we're putting it on the tax, because you gotta figure, uh, the, uh, north plate. Facility that was there was all professional. So we're putting that back on the tax. Uh, the property that was owned on Harrison, she moved all the way across. And we're putting that right on the tax. And when I opened up the Chateau Bank, which twenty years ago, that was on the tax, because I was on, uh, KFC. So we're putting that back on the tax. So with this going up, it will give some tax revenue for the town. Because we don't put that on, I think, myself. I think you want to answer your, you know. I'm gonna make sure it's nice because I have my business right across the street, and I've been there a long time, and we do a lot of business across the street.
What kind of study did you do to warrant the, uh, additional storage attempt? We're getting quite a few of these petitions now.
Uh, we went over to the Purdue Center off of Broadway. Um, and we actually spoke with the business, excuse me, development team over there. Um, this had been probably about two years ago before some of the other facilities were brought up in the area. So we did a study. We saw the other storage facilities around us, such as global storage, art and storage. Um, there's a couple owners in the area. I know, um, one off of thirty, what's it, public storage. They just expanded theirs as well. So there is an area, um, also I might add that I'm a realtor within Northwest Indiana, so I see the growth of variable itself, and there is a large need for storage.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussions?
Mr. President, there was one lady that got up during the meeting, she lives in the neighborhood of Mr. Williams, uh, with the landscaping and the lighting. He has assured her that his, uh, development would not have any impact on, um, her living.
Well, the resolution is along, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by the side of my.
Aye.
Both the same. I, I guess. Well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
So, Mr. President, our, um, next petitioner has asked for a deferral for this meeting.
Okay.
That's High Tech Storage LLC, AKA High Tech Storage LLC petitioner owner located at two forty west seventy-nine avenue. Various of each approval from section twenty-one dash thirty-six on two point five five acres in the C-two community commercial zoning district. And they were seeking to allow existing storage facility for future owners. And once again, they have asked for a deferral for this evening.
Thank you. That concludes VCA's for tonight meeting. For all, so you, we do a motion, we're pushing a pro for all.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Mitchell, second by Councilwoman Muzelak, that we approve of the pro for tonight for the high tech of storage. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both the same. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes VCA action, there are the opens. Any new business? At this time, like, open up a public comment. Any public comments? May I say, come, state your name, your address, and please, please, let me know your comments to the three members. Any public comment?
Ryan, can I start with you on this, please? There was a special emergency meeting held on, by town council on December seventh.
I can't hear what you said, sir.
Was there a special or emergency meeting held by town council on December sixth?
September the sixth. I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding what you're saying.
I'm having a hard time understanding why you're running this meeting, but that's.
Hey, here, that's it. Have a seat. You're done. You're not gonna sit here and disrespect me. Have a seat now.
I'm not.
Have a seat, disrespect, have a seat. Thank you. Thank, I.
And, and as a matter of fact, I actually have a right to question. And by the way.
Chief, asking, hey, story, ma.
Mr. Chief, before you do that, Ryan, can you just sit down, please? I don't wanna see you with a story out here.
He has to test us about Mr. White.
This would be the first time I ever seen you buy that story out.
He, he's not gonna disrespect me. You can just, everybody, that you walk down here. Have a seat, sir. You're done.
Or you try, please, while you wait, go ahead, come on up now. The trial, please.
Any other public comment? Announcements. Town building will be closed December twenty-second and twenty-fifth in a celebration of Christmas. The next town council meeting is December twenty-sixth at six-thirty P.M. And there will be a special town council meeting December twentieth at fourth century. One more person to this.
Second.
Second.
Just make sure you're a coward, a coward. And it's a good thing that you're going bye-bye.